Okay, we're on.
Yeah.
We're ready to rock and roll.
How are you?
All right, good evening. Welcome to the January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty New Market Planning Board meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Are there any public comments on anything that's not on the agenda? No public comments, close that at seven oh one. Next is we have the minutes from the December tenth meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion, comments, edits? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have, but motion passes unanimously.
You have Jamie's uh...
Jamie's...
You wanna sit over here? Do you have another chair over here?
Jamie's uh...
You've been misplaced for a moment. We'll get you straightened out though. That's okay, no problem.
So Sarah is not here tonight, so I'm gonna appoint Ted to sit in as the alternate, please. First on the agenda is Pelzah Realty LLC, Michael Pelzah, public hearing for an application for site plan review regarding adding a forty by forty accessory building to existing funeral home at the rear of the lot with additional parking utilities. The building will be used for crematory services. The lot is located at seventy seven Exeter Road, tax map U three, lot one thirty six, in the B one zone. So Diane, do you have a recommendation? I went through the package. It looks to me as if the application is complete.
Yep. I have reviewed the application against the checklist, and there are a couple of minor things that were missing, and I did speak with the applicant today, and he's addressed those items, or will address them in the next iteration of the plans. We do have a letter from Steve Badger, who is in a butter across the street, who says he's in favor of the project and has no issue with the project going forward. We also received some positive comments from the Public Works Director, the Code Enforcement Officer, and our Police Chief, who all are in favor of the project and hope to see it go forward. And let's see, there are a couple of minor things that resulted in some waiver requests from the applicant, and we'll go over those. One has to do with outdoor lighting. The second has to do with the site plan not providing pedestrian and bicycle amenities. And so at this point, the application is substantially complete. I would recommend that the planning board accept it for a technical review, and once that occurs, we can talk about the merits of the application and hear from the applicant as to what the proposal is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Diane. First, I'm gonna appoint Michael to sit in as Mr. Dussette, as he accused himself. Is there a motion to accept the application as complete?
Make a motion to accept the application as substantially complete for Pelzah Realty LLC, Michael Pelzah, for property located at seventy seven Exeter Road, tax map U three, lot one thirty six, in the B one zone, for a addition of a crematory building with additional parking.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, with that, we will open up the public hearing. Welcome. Would you please give us a brief description of the project?
Good evening. As you all know, my name is Michael Pelzah. I'm the lifelong resident of New Market, and I also own Ken and Pelzah Funeral Home. I joined the staff, my family owned business, in nineteen ninety seven, and in nineteen ninety nine, in December, my dad opened our current facility. Tonight, I'm in front of you with this application for crematory, and I'm hoping to bring the second crematory to the town of New Market, the first crematory being the Pep Crematory on Route one fifty two. And the plan is to build a forty by forty foot building with a single retort inside. Our funeral home's been assisting families with cremation services since well before I was born, and the cremation rates continue to increase greatly over the past years. Building a crematory on our current site will help us better assist the families with state-of-the-art equipment, eliminating some of the logistics, and keeping the chain of custody complete throughout the entire process. The crematory company I'm working with has installed thousands of retorts in the United States of America, and many in New Hampshire. I'd like to introduce Sean, my project manager, at this time to go over further details.
Is there a particular location that's easiest for the board to see?
It's the best.
Is there anybody in the audience that really needs to see that? If not, that's fine, that's fine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Lorden with Time Bond, the site design engineer on the project. What's existing is clearly an existing funeral home on a one-point acre lot. Here's the home here. This back here is shown on this aerial as dirt. This has been paved. There are some parking spots back here. You can see to the west and to the north, this is all commercial use, a lot of woods to the rear. This is the Vietnam Railroad, and over here is a residential to the south. There are some wetlands on site. There's a few pockets up in here, and otherwise, as you heard, what we're proposing is a crematory. So one-story, sixteen-hundred-square-foot building that's shown in orange to the rear of the site. So the existing site up in here, we're not changing anything. This is the building. There's a driveway, parking, additional parking, as I said, here in this light gray. This darker gray area, we're proposing to add seven parking spaces just for some overflow. And then here is the building. There are no increases in traffic. Not like people are gonna be coming and going for this usage. In terms of utilities, we've been in close contact with Eversource. They are proposing to tie into this utility pole here, bring in another utility pole, and another utility pole over here, and then go underground. And the reason we have the two utility poles is we're avoiding the wetlands and the wetland buffers. There are two underground propane tanks located over here. Right now, they're sized at a thousand gallons. That will be confirmed through the process, but those are covered by bollards or some granite to protect them, and those will tie back to the crematory. There is no proposed water or sewer. There's no use for it or need for it at the building. In terms of grading, this is really the only area that we're disturbing back in here. We are completely outside of the wetlands. We are also completely outside of the wetland buffer. For drainage, we are below the threshold of five thousand square feet increase in impervious, so there really was no requirement for a stormwater report, but just we had some space that wasn't being used. We thought it was good. We tried to direct all the runoff from this parking area. You can see we've got a treatment swale towards the rear of the site, or the side of the site, and there's a check dam. The water will flow there, get some treatment, dissipate as it hits the check dam, and then it will enter into the wetland buffer and eventually towards the wetlands. We have reviewed this with the DOT, because this is a state road. They're in the process of providing a letter. It is in the queue for signature, and they're saying that they don't have any issue. This is technically change of use, so it has to be reviewed by them, but they're not requiring any changes or any additional information. As Ms. Hardy said, we have received sign off from Police, Fire, DPW, Office and Building Safety. There are no state approvals related with this. We're not impacting the wetlands. We're not large enough for an AOT. We will be complying with all of DES's air quality requirements, and this just came up yesterday, I believe, that this is gonna go off to Underwood Engineering for review, particularly of just some of the grading and drainage. Do you wanna talk about the waivers now, or do we wanna have a discussion and come back to those?
Why don't you let us know what the waivers are also?
Sure. We're requesting two waivers. One is for the lighting. One of your sections says a twenty-foot-high minimum, or maximum, sorry, for the fixture heights. What we're doing is we're proposing to put lights on these existing Eversource poles. It's just something you can... They're actually in pretty good locations, just to add a little bit more light in the area. This one right here is perfectly centered to distribute some light back here. But because we're gonna have communications to the crematory building, they have a requirement of twenty-five-foot-high minimum for their light fixtures. So because they have a communication line, I believe they have to go above that, so we can't meet the twenty with that, therefore requesting a waiver. And the other one is for pedestrian and bicycle, yeah, amenities. So we're not, you know, it doesn't really fit for a bike rack there or a sidewalk back there. Again, this is really just overflow parking, and this area will be, there are two garage doors on this side that'll provide access in and out. That's everything we hope to highlight, but we have to answer any questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you identify again the existing poles?
On site?
On site.
There is only one existing pole over, there might, this might technically be on the property that's bought across the street, and then it goes underground to the building.
Okay, so you're proposing to add two poles?
We're adding on the other side. They could not connect, Eversource could not connect over to this side. It was maxed out. So they can only make a certain number of connections on each pole. That pole they cannot connect to. Certainly feeds this build. There's not enough service to add another to continue on this side.
Is technically not enough?
Correct. Eversource ruled that they cannot. That was our preference. Our preference was to come along this line.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Does Eversource have any downward-type deflecting lamps that may not spill over onto any adjacent properties? I'm thinking that your next-door neighbor is going to have some housing. He's proposing nine studio apartment units, and I just wanna make sure that there's not gonna be any light impacts associated with that, 'cause it's, it sounds like it's gonna be a fairly high fixture.
It would be twenty-five feet, which would be five feet over, your requirement, but we have not selected an actual fixture. They say they have many to choose from, between fifty watt and up to a hundred watt, so we haven't selected that, but we'd clearly be looking for a full cutoff, you know, something that would meet the requirements, and we'd take into account spillover.
Can we go back to this for a minute? So is Eversource saying they can't upgrade the line to the current pole?
They cannot increase capacity off of that existing pole, correct?
If they replace that pole?
That wasn't an option. That's not something they said. We discussed with them when we started the meeting. We met over on this side.
I begged them to come on this side, 'cause I thought it was gonna be a shorter and straighter shot.
Right, well, 'cause you're also asking for a waiver for not having underground utilities, correct?
No. There's not gonna be, well, other than that...
They're gonna be all overhead.
That's correct. There's not gonna be any underground utilities.
So won't they need a waiver for that?
I, that's a big question. I don't think so. I think it says to the extent feasible. If you'd like me to look at my book and...
No, we can, I'm sure it's on a TRC.
I think that, I'll make a note of that for the TRC.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments? So it's the pleasure of the board. I'm personally fine with it. I understand that Underwood is gonna look at the drainage, even though you don't, not required to, just to kinda make sure that works, but not, not a complete review of the whole site design.
That's our understanding, yes.
Any other questions or comments? No? So, I, I'm gonna make... I don't see a need to do a TRC on this. I think we get Underwood's comments, and we can talk about it as a board. I don't, you know, there's not a lot I don't think of detail here that needs to be scrutinized, but it's up to you guys, whatever you guys wanna do. What are your thoughts?
How do you wanna follow, so Diane said she was making a note to go over the power situation, the pole situation in the TRC. So how would we handle that?
But I think we also have, then, the paved parking area is also going to be encroaching in the setback. So is that another waiver, looking at the asphalt plan?
I don't believe that comes into play with the...
We got into that on...
B three, B two, B one zone, sorry.
I thought we got into that on the neighboring one that granted a waiver on a project next door.
Yeah, I'd like to, I have not reviewed this with an eye to whether it meets the town's regulations at this point. I've just reviewed it for completion, 'cause that's typically how we proceed. I would like to take some time to look at it with the engineer, and we can also evaluate the lighting and report on it at the next meeting of the planning board, hopefully. See if we can get a letter from February eleventh, so that we can move this forward at that point, if that's acceptable with the applicant.
That sounds like you. Sounds like, go ahead.
No, and I, I just wanted, 'cause you asked the board, you know, so I agree with you. I don't think we need this full-blown TRC on this. I think having the town engineer review it and then bringing up these particular comments or, you know, questions relative to our regulations would be good to have him comment on. They're so detailed in the review to begin with.
Well, I mean, I agree. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. If we don't allow parking in the setback there without a waiver, then we need another waiver request.
We would have to take it up at the next meeting anyway, 'cause we don't have it right now.
And I guess the, to me, the way that the polls handles, I don't know, there isn't much time, but can you get a letter from Eversource just saying that they can't use the other pole?
Sure.
I mean, or even an email of some sort, or some communication?
Sure. They've been very responsive. I could think we should be able to get that.
And if they can, you know, give you some specifications on what the lighting fixture would be to prove that it's a downward deflecting full cutoff style lamp, to minimize the visual impacts on adjacent properties, that would be helpful.
And so the additional parking you're putting in is really to help the existing funeral home function when you have a big wake?
It's currently gravel, and I just didn't want mud between the parking lot and the new building, and that's all we're trying to do, make it so...
Yeah, it makes sense.
It does. When we laid out the pavement right to it, it was just a little bit of extra pavement for some additional parking.
And that's fine, so, I mean, I'd like to think that we can get a letter from Underwood and get anything addressed by the next meeting, so we can resolve this, just move it on. I don't think there's any, anything too complicated.
No, I don't think so either. Just wanna confirm some of the things that Valerie had questioned.
So I guess with that, I want to obtain a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the application for Pelzah Realty LLC, Michael Pelzah, at seventy-six Exeter Road, tax map U three, lot one thirty six, in the B one zone, to the February eleventh meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give it to Jamie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing for boundary line adjustment requested by Laurie Hawkins at fourteen New Road, tax map U three, lot one fourteen, and Chad Hill at sixteen New Road, tax map U three, lot one thirteen, both in the R two zone. Three hundred and eighteen square feet will be added to fourteen New Road from sixteen New Road near the front of the lots where the garage at fourteen New Road is located, and three hundred and eighteen square feet will be added to sixteen New Road from fourteen New Road at the back of the lots. A portion of the garage at fourteen New Road is situated on the sixteen New Road property. The boundary line adjustment will correct the encroachment. Good evening. Is the applicant or representative here?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Scott Fudrow, Fudrow Land Surveying. I prepared a survey for this. I have electronic version of that. Do you want me to plug it in, or...
We do. People at home, I have no clue how it works. If you can figure it out. It's way above my ability to figure that out.
I feel like the only town where people have a problem doing this.
Yes.
Exactly.
Diane, can you...
There is a password on this screen. Well, this door, the door won't lock. Other than that, it will unlock permanently.
No luck?
I can call down, Stu. Do you wanna call down?
Yeah, we have it. Okay, there's a tripod there. Can we stick it on there? Here we go. I think that'd be better than...
This is for...
So Ted, you're gonna sit in on this one?
Okay.
Michael, you're out on this one, 'cause Bill's back.
Hi, can we have some help with the overhead PowerPoint? Okay, thank you.
It's been the same for ten years. Nobody can ever figure out how to work it.
It would have her name on it.
These are all mine.
I'm sorry, Jamie's packet? There's someone's, she didn't get a packet.
She wants this one?
No, we can share with what's over here. I just assumed that there was one, that it would've been there, 'cause there usually is.
Well, we moved you from over there, right, so...
Yeah, no, but there was no packet.
That's all right. We've got the paper copy all set up, so we can... Yeah, no, we're good.
Thank you. So she went away?
You never wanna see how the sausage is made.
Breaking Alex's uh...
I don't know what happened to the packet, Jamie. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's not anything that's stressing over. It's just a bunch of paper. We'll be all right.
All righty, there we go.
Now you can't even see it.
We have a little copy. The people can see it at home. That's good.
All right, so what I found in the survey, she had no idea. She inherited this house, the client Laurie Hawkins, her parents, and she was selling it, and it was under contract. And the neighbor brought up something about the lot might go through the garage, so she hired me to do the survey. And sure enough, it does go through the garage. So in the process of doing the research, that subdivision was done in the fifty-five, and it broke into lots, I think, something like that. She's lot four of that subdivision. Shortly after that, that lot was conveyed in nineteen fifty-seven, and then conveyed again right after that. So I'm guessing, without any building records, that the house was built in nineteen fifty-seven. There are no records or building permits available to show if the garage was added on later, but investigating on Google Earth, it's been there as long as Google Earth has been around, nineteen ninety-two, so it's been quite a few years. I did go to the ZBA earlier this month to get an equitable waiver for that, and what we're trying to do now is just correct the property line issue and provide the neighbor, Chad Hill, on lot one thirteen, the minimum amount of frontage that we can get. And you can see on the plan that Laurie's lot is left with just about five feet. So it's gonna be an equal land transfer, so no change in area, just trying to fix the boundary line.
Okay, thank you. Before we continue, is the application is complete?
Yes, it is.
I want to obtain a motion to accept the application as complete. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dussette. Is there a second? Motion's made, seconded, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the, for the public hearing. Any questions for the applicant? Bill?
Another option for area B is you can invert that, try and flip that triangle the other way, with the exact same area. Does that make a little bit more regular shaped lot?
Go up that way instead?
Yeah.
Might make it a little better.
Just, I don't think it would negatively impact the board's decision if you and your applicant decide to do that.
Okay. I know she's kind of in a rush. The buyers are already there.
Yeah, and that's, and I didn't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna slow things down for you, but...
It can be a condition.
If you wanna change it, I would not be opposed to changing it in the final.
So, just so I understand, Bill, you're saying to reduce the rear boundary?
So right now, the lot goes up and drags over.
Right.
So instead, from this point, go over to...
Exactly, so you reduce the rear boundary. It wouldn't look so funky.
That's a good point. If the owner wants to do that, that's fine. If not, you know, fine too. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, this is a boundary line adjustment, but yet it seems like you've only surveyed one lot. Why is the, why is the other lot not only half surveyed?
He didn't survey the other lot. I mean, I could put the area on there, but we're changing, exchanging equal areas, so I didn't do it that way.
But you're really, you're doing a boundary line adjustment between two lots, but you're really only showing survey information for one lot. So you, why wouldn't you have survey information on the rear of parcel?
So maybe, sorry.
Go ahead.
Maybe a waiver?
So that's what I'm asking, 'cause usually you would have to survey both, have, each lot would need to be surveyed, 'cause it's a, it's an application for two lots.
Submit a waiver for survey of the additional boundary on the adjacent lot?
I think we can do that.
That's not part of the boundary adjustment, though.
Well, it's all...
No, but it's...
It's kind of all, like, if you did a hundred acres and a one-acre lot next to it, and you're making a little change, it's a, it's a typical waiver to not survey that entire hundred acres, 'cause that's burdensome. In this case, they're both pretty much same, but still, I don't know that either landowner is going to benefit significantly by additional survey here, so I think maybe a waiver would be appropriate.
Aren't there encroachments on that other property line as well?
Well, that's not part of the application.
Right, but it was my understanding from early discussions that they were going to come back at a later date to correct that?
They could if they wanted.
You're not concerned with that, right? You're not concerned with that right now. They're just trying to fix the lot line. And I don't know, they were asking me what the proper protocol is for that, and I said the landowner has to deal with the landowner at this point. I showed it on.
Bill, does this actually require a waiver? Does this, I think this meets our regulations.
I do too.
Our regulations don't require the lots to be surveyed?
No, not a full boundary survey. It's one, if you're just adjusting a line.
So where it plays a role is if they weren't equal area swaps, you would want to be able to assess whether there was an impact on zoning.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the fact that they're equal.
Yeah.
So what's the rest of the board think? I don't think it needs a waiver.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so we're not gonna, everybody else okay with not asking for a waiver? Off the side of that, go ahead.
I do think we have a requirement, though, for the map and lot numbers to show on each lot and then the before and after, the current and the proposed acreage. Because this will go to the tax assessor even though it's going to be the same.
What else have I, if you look at notes one and two?
Can I not see it?
There are notes on it.
Yeah, notes, I think notes one and two.
This is the survey premises here that's labeled over here. So it's one thirteen that's also labeled right here.
Yeah, it's just so, all right, I see what you're saying.
So I showed the adjacent lot line and there's a note on there to be abandoned.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
That's all I had.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Hey, actually, I have a recommendation. You've got an equitable waiver. You may want to note that on the case of this plan. Just to help future people understand why, so that if somebody tries to get a mortgage or whatever, they don't say, oh, this doesn't meet setbacks. It does because of the equitable waiver. So it'll be a little path of breadcrumbs.
Yeah, and I was waiting for a letter from mail. Did I get one of them?
You didn't get a letter from the, you should have. I'll mention it to Sue.
Yeah, you should get the decision from the ZBA.
And I don't know if this is important or not, but the first thing that I noticed when I looked at this is, is this sewer or is it septic? And I figured out that it's sewer because it's right across from the treatment plant. But maybe there should be a note on there that these lots are serviced by municipal sewer?
I wouldn't jump to that assumption.
Okay.
Because there are definitely some on New Road that may not be.
Okay.
I did want to mention, there was a letter, decision that was sent out to the applicant, not to the survey, but to the applicant.
So the reason I initially was thinking about that is because if the subdivision is impacting a rich area, D E S plays a role. But I suspect the odds are it's sewer. Do you happen to know?
It does say, it does say, but do I not see a sewer manhole?
Uh, there may be one in front.
Right in front of the house.
Just below what says New Road, right?
Yeah, and there's one right in front of the house, too.
Yeah.
So I think, Bill, what I heard, though, is a recommendation that I think you should add. It's good to add the note for the waiver on the plan.
Yep.
I think the sewer septic, believe it's sewer, but maybe a note that it is serviced by sewer while you're making that same change. And if that is indeed the case, and if not, you obviously have to figure out where the septic's at to make sure you haven't impacted that.
Sure, if I run one of them out.
Yeah, with the sewer right there, it's got, I'm expecting it to be in the sewer. So with those edits, does anybody want to make a motion?
Can I make a motion, Bill, with your recommendations?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the boundary line adjustment as presented. With the addition of a note on the plan, says the equitable waiver granted by the ZBA. And a note that identifies whether or not the lots are serviced by municipal sewer. I think that's it.
Thank you, go.
And Lori, did you want the recommendation for the modification of the rear?
I think I'd rather not. I'd rather leave that up to the applicant or anyone who wants to do that.
But that would be okay with us?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Congratulations. So I guess the next step is get the mylaws into, get the revisions into Ms. Hardy and I'll come in and sign them. Thank you.
Scott, if you want to take this letter, this is the notice of decision. I don't know why you didn't get one. It was supposed, I believe it was sent out to the applicant. Probably didn't share that with you.
All right, next on the agenda is seventy-seven Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Chini slash Chinburg Builders, Inc., public hearing for an application for an eleven lot open space subdivision with municipal water and sewer services on a twelve acre lot. The lot is located at seventy-seven Hershey Lane, tax map R four, lot three in the I two zone. Michael, you are going to sit in again on this to replace Bill, who has recused himself. Ms. Hardy, can you walk us through, I believe the application is complete?
Yes, the application is complete. There are a couple of things that I wanted to go over that I did not get a chance to go over with the applicant's representative. And my printer, I had printer problems when I went to send an email later. So one of the things is we do have to notify the code enforcement officer, the public works director, the fire chief, and conservation commission. I already sent a copy of the conservation commission, but they're supposed to get copies given the opportunity to comment on them. So if we can have that addressed in addition to the other things we talked about.
Sure.
Okay, so the application's complete.
And the application is complete. I would recommend that it be accepted for a technical review.
Is there a motion to accept the application as complete?
So moved.
Motion's made by Val. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the application? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. You can end this. Thank you. Now we will open up the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening.
Will you please introduce yourself and then you would give us a description of the project, please?
Sure. I'm Alex Monaster. I'm representing Hershey Lane LLC, also known as Walter Chini, as well as Chinburg Builders. The last meeting that we were here with you all, you approved a special use permit for this project to allow us to do an open space design. That's what we have before you tonight is a fully designed application for the eleven lot conservation subdivision on this parcel. The parcel is expected to conserve just about eight point nine five acres of open space on this parcel, which is a little less than twelve acres, like eleven point eight one. This will be accessed by a town road with water and sewer. As you know, the entrance to this town road is off of the existing class six portion of Hershey Lane, which will be upgraded to full town standards. And water and sewer will be run to the lots. If the planning board accepts the plan tonight, which you guys did, then we'll go ahead to do a review with Underwood and to do the technical review of the project with the department heads and those such. There are a few waiver requests that were submitted by our engineers that I can walk you through. The first waiver is in regards to the scale of the plans. This waiver to allow the plans to be of a different scale so that they're a little bit more easily readable. The second waiver is a wetlands buffer waiver. So as you can see on this parcel, the back portion is prime wetlands and then there's a finger of wetlands that come down. That waiver was accompanied by a letter from Luke Hurley from GOV Environmental. And the reason that we requested that waiver is because the function and values of the finger of wetlands that come down are not that of a prime wetland, but it is connected to a prime wetland. So the new market zoning requires the hundred foot buffer if it's connected. But they're actually just poorly drained soils, and so we're requesting the twenty-five foot waiver, which would be standard for poorly drained soils. The third waiver request is a waiver that was requested for the fifty foot portion of the right of way for the road coming in on the classics portion. As it exists today, there is not fifty feet that the town owns on Hershey Lane for that classics portion. That waiver, I believe, is duplicative because at this point we have been able to agree with the abutter to do a lot and adjustment to get the fifty feet needed for that right of way. So I don't think that waiver will be necessary. And then the last waiver is to reduce the travel portion of the pavement on the road from twelve feet to eleven feet on each side.
So twenty-four foot to twenty-two foot.
Correct. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Does anybody have any question? I've got a couple. It's labeled here as sheet two of two. There's a note on, it looks like that plan, it's on to set survey order. In the middle of the right of way, it says, front setback twenty-five feet from paved roadway. Is that actually, you're not asking for that, right? That's not the regulation, right? Twenty-five feet from the right of way. I think that's a missed, I think that's a bad note.
Yeah, I think that's a misprint. This is twenty-five feet from the right of way, the line that shows.
The houses you show on there are certainly more than twenty-five feet.
Right.
I just said that note should be twenty-five feet.
Should be revised.
Setback typical, not from paved roadway, correct?
Sounds right to me.
And then the other thing on that, just because it shows up on that same plan, waiver requested from the hundred foot prime wetland setback, which you just talked about. So GOV did an analysis saying that that finger, even though our regulations say it's not, even though our regulations say it is part of the prime wetland, identifying the functional functionality of the wetland is not a prime, that's out of the prime wetland, correct?
Yeah, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. So I'll do my best to explain to you. My understanding is that the new market zoning ordinance requires that if any portion of a wetland is connected to a prime wetland, then it also has a hundred foot buffer.
Right.
We're requesting a waiver from that because the function and value of this wetland is not that of a prime wetland. It's just poorly drained soils.
Correct. That's the way I read the package that they put together. Okay. Those are my questions. Anybody else have any questions, comments at this point? All right, so Diane, we better send this off to Underwood. Have they been contacted already?
We have contacted Underwood. They have provided a proposal and the applicant's representative indicated that there'll be a check tomorrow, sometime later this week, so we can set up a TRC.
Tomorrow morning, we'll be here, ready to go.
So we're ready to go with that and we can schedule a TRC once we get all the parties together as to when we can meet.
Okay. Just one comment. I do think at the TRC or at this next meeting, whatever works, is GOV should be here, somebody from them should be here, because I know it'll come up.
Okay, sure.
I know the letter to me was pretty self-explanatory, but there may be abutters here or there may be somebody else here who's asking questions. You know, rather get the answers at the meeting rather than lose another month.
Absolutely.
All right, so.
Did we want to deal with some of the general waivers so that?
Sure.
Like the plan scale? I don't have to think about that. Are you saying that your waiver three request is, you're withdrawing that? That's the?
Yeah, unless the town planner believes that it's necessary, I, you know, in my review and in talking with Christian just today, I believe that's duplicative. It was requested because as it exists today, Hershey Lane has a variable width not meeting the fifty feet. So as a condition of the plan, it could be that fifty feet is.
I think the town would rather see the fee simple ownership of a full fifty foot right of way as part of the acceptance of the plan. So I think the idea of having a boundary adjustment drawn up to reflect that is a more prudent way to go than just having an easement.
Right, that's how it's intended to be at the moment.
Yeah.
You're a hundred percent comfortable you can do that? I would suggest leaving the waiver request in until later and then you know what.
Yeah, sure.
That's fine.
Right? It doesn't hurt to leave it in place in case that falls through for some reason.
Sure.
So we're looking at the waiver request for one and four, which would be the hundred foot scale.
Yep.
Width.
The hundred foot scale, I think, is a no-brainer.
That's a, yeah.
If that was a hundred scale, we couldn't read it. I haven't had enough reading it as it is, so. And I, do you want to handle that one first, Val?
Yeah.
entertain a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request for waiver to our site plan regulation, section four oh eight, with regards to the plan scale as requested by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And you want to address the eleven foot lane versus twelve foot lanes?
Make a waiver request to grant the, sorry, make a motion to grant the waiver for section three point oh two B four to reduce the travel lane from twelve feet to eleven feet in width.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Did somebody second that? You can see?
Yeah.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to continue to February eleventh?
I think that due to the technical review committee, we will not be able to file prior to February eleventh. So if we could continue to the March meeting, I think that would be the best.
Sure.
Make a motion that we continue the hearing on the application of seventy-seven Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Chini Chinburg Builders, Inc., regarding the proposed open space subdivision at seventy-seven Hershey Lane, tax map R four, lot three in the I two zone to the March.
I thought it was the seventeenth.
Is it the seventeenth?
It's gonna be the tenth or the seventeenth. So the March seventeenth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, that's why she said the seventeenth.
I think that's the town meeting, so we postpone it for another week.
All right, next on the agenda.
You do a TRC on that?
Do you want us to have a TRC for that?
Yes, that would be great. Who would like to be on?
If the TRC is not going to meet until, they're not going to submit to the eleventh, I think I just heard her say, right?
Yeah, and the engineer needs a couple of weeks to review.
I won't be back in town until the nineteenth. I mean, sometime the end of February, I'll be on the TRC.
Okay. You can certainly try to do that.
Or get me the stuff electronically and I can call in.
Okay.
Anybody else want to volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
Anybody else? If not, we'll just have two members. That's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine. We'll do, we'll do two. Thank you. All righty. Next on the agenda is public hearing for an application for boundary line adjustment requested by Five Railroad LLC for Five Railroad Street, tax map U four, lot sixteen in the I two zone, Chini Property Management Corp., fifty Exeter Road, tax map U four, lot fifteen, the M two A zone, Boston and Main Railroad, tax map U three, lot one thirty-eight, the M two A zone. Three landowners are seeking to reconfigure the existing parcel boundaries between the adjacent parcels. No new lots are being created. Point seven nine acres is being conveyed to Chini Property Management Corp. from lot one thirty-eight. And point seven two acres is being conveyed to Five Railroad Street LLC from lot one thirty-eight. Diane, is the application complete?
Yes, the application is complete.
Is there a motion? The application is complete, then.
Just for clarification, are we looking at two separate applications?
There are three properties involved. So there are three applicants involved and we have signatures from all three.
But are we looking at?
One application.
Single application.
A single application, but there's three parties and they've all been authorized.
Is there a motion to accept the application?
To make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Welcome. Thank you.
I'm Mike Severt, and I'm JS Engineering. I'm representing Five Railroad Street LLC, which I own, and also Walter Chini, the Chini Properties and Walter's here this evening. So it is three parcels. It's one application. It's a lot line revision between three parcels. It's B and M Railroad. I'm also representing B and M Railroad. Five Railroad LLC, which is on Railroad Street, and Walter Chini's property, which is as frontage on Route one, one oh eight. The parcel that, your tax map is incorrect. The tax map says that Sidmore property, the owner of the Sign Company down on Railroad Street, right by my property, actually owns lot one thirty-eight, which is kind of shaded in that, the hatched blue area, that small little green, and then this hatched orange area right there. That's incorrect, the, the B and M Railroad owns that. But I, I don't think it's really that relevant here. But, so lot one thirty-eight, and then we'll lot one thirty-eight dash one is owned by B and M Railroad. It really should be shown as lot one thirty-eight, but anyway. So we're buying or, or purchasing and transferring and doing a lot line revision of lot one thirty-eight. And the hatched area in the orange, the point seven nine acres of that parcel on the southerly end is, is being merged with Walter's property, and then the hatch blue area on the northerly end is being, being merged with the dark blue property, which is currently the Five Railroad Street property, which is where my property is. Changes to that, that long narrow white section there, which is the property owned by the Sign Company. And then the remainder of the, of the parcel is the railroad, which exists right through there now. And that continues on for, of course, miles and miles up to Maine and down into Massachusetts. So we can't show that on this plan, obviously, but we're showing the relative property and the boundary lines from the corner of the Route one oh eight right of way, where Walter's property is, up to the right of way of Route one fifty-two, the state of New Hampshire's right of way line, and then where it starts to go under that bridge right there. Right here. Goes underneath the bridge on Route one fifty-two, and of course, that railroad property continues on incorporates the railroad in that. Really, it's just a, a simple lot line revision, combining these into R two lots, and the railroad doesn't utilize that property anymore. There's a spur, which I'm kind of showing right here, comes up through here, ends right there, almost in my parking lot out there. And that's just unused at, at this point. This property that they're making available to abutters, and so we've taken advantage of that. The reason they're kind of cutting that in half, that little green section in there, is obviously Moonlight Brook goes through there. They want to control that bridge, which has the railroad, supports the railroad tracks on that, so they don't want to have any issues with that, of course, to get their trains through. Other than that, like it says in the application, there's no new lots. Each of the lots are, are actually getting bigger by three quarters of an acre, plus or minus, and really nothing else changes, so I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions? Bill?
Yeah, I know you've got to have a question.
Have we accepted the application?
Yeah.
No.
We voted accept it?
No, we haven't.
I will hold off till we get through that.
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
I just...
Bill?
You already did.
Jane seconded, we voted second, huh?
Okay, sorry. Yeah, question. So green is owned by the railroad, right?
Yes.
But your, green is multiple lots?
Uh, yes, I mean technically, yes it is, it's one thirty-eight dash one. I don't know why.
One thirty-eight dash one's not part of, party to this application, right?
It is, yep.
How?
The railroad owns it, so one thirty-eight dash one is this.
You don't want it to be because you didn't notify the abutters on the other side of one thirty-eight one.
I did, I notified all those abutters.
Okay.
I notified extra abutters. Just to be safe.
Where's the abutter across the street from your, your office?
Right next to the town hall here.
No, you have a tip in the north there on your plan, who owns that?
Yeah, who owns that? That's the town.
Uh, the town owns that parking lot.
Right.
Okay.
And the town's not listed as an abutter.
But they're, they're pretty much party to this application, I mean, hard to say the town doesn't know.
Yeah, right.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that technically the town is an abutter.
No, I didn't know the town was not notified.
Are you worried about the abutter on the other side of one fifty-two?
I think I notified them. They called this evening.
I don't, I'd have to look.
The pop-up?
Uh...
Yeah, we have them.
That's been sold.
Okay.
The big house?
Yeah, the big house.
Railroad house?
Yeah.
He had the note, we talked.
The big house on the hill?
Yep.
So that is tax map lot number one nineteen?
Well, and that's, so to the question that I asked you earlier, can I ask Mr. Severt a question?
Yeah, right here, what's next LLC? U four lot one nineteen?
No?
Right here, right there.
Yeah, what's next LLC, yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay, hold on, Diane has a question.
Yeah, Mike, when I talked with you today, I questioned the area that kind of wraps around. Who is, who is that owned by?
Not quite sure what area you mean, could you...
I'll show it to you.
Yeah, can you?
It's from where the tape wall is, and it goes right across, and it wraps around your property.
That's the state, the state of New Hampshire.
Um, okay, were they, were they listed as abutters?
Um, never notified the owner of a roadway.
Right. Okay, I'm just, I was curious if this was owned by the B and M Railroad.
No.
No, when the state did the bridge, they did that.
Right.
Is it twenty-eight? So this is owned by the state?
Yep. Yep.
It's part of one fifty-two.
But this is the abutter across this right of way. Bill was asking about over here.
Yeah, and we got that.
You have, yep.
I didn't know the land was clear.
That, yeah, that's...
So the only other question I have is, there's a couple lot corners that aren't showing proposed monuments, and we require all corners to be monumental.
Alright, we were trying to get away with that.
Yeah, not mine.
But I knew we wouldn't.
I learned, I learned.
Walter didn't want to pay for the extras, so I left him off.
I think they're in your portion.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Phil, do you want to make a motion, subject to your comment?
I've only got one comment, so it's easy.
Oh, hold on.
Wait a minute, joke that for public comment?
Yeah.
That's right, public comment?
Okay, we did receive some correspondence from an attorney who is representing lot one thirty-eight A, and I'm not exactly sure the context of why he even sent this letter. It's my understanding that they own the land, however, the building itself is owned by two trustees, is that correct?
Yeah, so...
And they were not notified, and that's why he's sending the letter? To state that they don't have any objections?
No.
They don't have...
If the letter says no objection...
Get that.
Okay, well, I wasn't, it wasn't clear, I get this letter, and it wasn't clear what the intent was, and you've got a copy of it.
I can explain it to you unless you want to know.
Can you explain to me why, and what the context of the letter was? And here's the letter, if you want to look at it and interpret it.
So that's where your tax maps are incorrect? Sidmoors own the white rectangle that's in there, which is the building. And the lot that is described is what's underneath the building and in that white only. But your tax map says that they own lot one thirty-eight, which they don't, the B and M Railroad owns that. And the attorney, who I work with all the time, approached me and talked about that access and, and that they don't own that, and there's some kind of tax consequence that they're gonna deal with, but I don't think it has any relevance to us, so...
And the relevance to this hearing is that they have no objection to the proposed subdivision.
Right, they're ending up saying, he did send a letter that they're saying that they don't really, they don't have any objection, the owner of that property.
I have the letter from the attorney plus the deeds here and the correspondence, also the original purchase and sales agreement. If anyone wants to review it, you're more than welcome to.
I can see without leaving that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? That'll close, public comment? Is there a motion?
I can make a motion to approve the boundary line adjustment as submitted. It would be one condition of monumenting all lot corners.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, if you can, by saying aye.
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 All opposed? May I just have it? Congratulations.
Thanks.
Alright, so the next item on the agenda, my understanding, is continue until...
Continue to the February meeting?
Till February eleventh, so we need a motion to continue, oh, actually, we never accepted, right?
Well, we can't accept it because of the notice.
It was a notice.
So he's gonna re...
Show up at the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we have re-notified correctly, re-notified the abutters.
Alright, on to other items, chairman's report. I've got nothing to report, I've got a question. See, and I spend a lot of time downtown, I noticed a couple weeks ago there was some screwing around with the entrance by the library.
They always lock it one way and then it was one way, then it changed.
They had it one way in, one way out, then back two ways?
Yeah, the town council did that.
Can't town council do that?
Yeah, but it was, the town owns the property.
Oh, I understand that.
It would like to talk, I would...
No, no, just, but it went back the way...
It would, the town council made the decision to go back to the way it was before, and the decision was made at the town council.
I mean, Gretchen can report on that.
And we were not, we were not informed of that. It wasn't made at the town council, the town administrator.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And reported it to us, but...
But wasn't that...
It was based upon the owners wanting, the, the business owners really wanted that change.
Feedback that drove that, yeah, that they didn't care for it. It was determined that they, we could come up with another six to eight parking spaces by doing that. And Rick Malosky and Steve and Eric Chinburg, I believe, all agreed to it, and then it was reported at the town council meeting, that's all I know. It wasn't involved in it.
Yeah, no, okay, I just curious, 'cause I, I don't think, I mean, that was, to me, that was part of a New Hampshire access permit and part of approved site plan that you just can't decide to change. I guess you can decide to do it, but it's not right to just change this approved site plan. That screwed up the access into that place big time. But it's back the way it was, right?
Well...
But, but relative to site plans, I think one thing that we, I don't know if it's Mike that follows up on, the, the whole issue is parking, and yet this, the snow is not getting removed or snow removal equipment's being parked on site, and it's really just taking up a lot of spaces in there. So if you could, you know...
Why would Mike Hoffman be involved?
Who's involved with site plan enforcement? I mean, I think a condition of our site plan approval would have been removal of the snow from the parking lot.
Or we, they showed a snow storage area.
Right, but it wouldn't have been in parking spaces.
It would have been a snow storage area, and there would have been a note that if they removed the site...
But it would not have been, parking spaces would not have been snow removal storage areas.
That I can't...
Yeah, but I, what my question is, is who enforces site plan regulations?
Mike Hoffman, I didn't, wasn't clear where you were going.
And I was going there because, you know, parking is an issue, so, you know, if we're doing site, if we're approving site plans and with X number of parking spaces, the intent is that there are X number of parking spaces. Not being utilized for snow storage.
If it's not brought to our attention, Valerie, we can't be running around looking for problems.
No, no, I understand, it was just, it was the issue of, the reason they changed the accesses to get more parking.
So, would you like me to bring that to the code enforcement officer's attention and ask them?
No, I think, I'm happy to write Erica a letter.
Yeah, and I, I...
An email.
As often as we go there, there's only been one time where parking was an issue to me, and it was when the, they were selling coats and stuff across the street, that pop-up sale.
Oh, yeah.
That screwed up downtown for three days. Other than that, I mean, I, I understand some of the people that live in the condos and apartments that sometimes have issues finding parking spaces, but the...
Right. And the town was trying to provide more parking by the change.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, so, yeah. There's others ways to provide parking.
I felt bad, 'cause I did see people getting pulled over going in, because you pull up there, you don't even know it's changing, so it was one way out, though, they changed one way in. It was like a one-way, the other way, but whatever, I just, I was surprised, so, alright. That's it, any other committee reports?
I wasn't at the stormwater management committee, I was away, I don't know what the update was on that.
We had a productive meeting, and we reviewed the draft document, and Kyle's going back to make some modifications. Greg, Sean Gray was there, and he was able to provide a lot of good information about the activity the water department has made, or the progress they've made with infrastructure improvements in the last ten years. And, so yes, it was a very good meeting, and we missed you. We have another meeting coming up on the twentieth...
Is it the twelfth of February?
The twentieth of February? I thought it was the twentieth.
Anything else?
No.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Second's like Jane, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, motion passed, we're going to say thank you very much.